What's in it for the town?
Exactly, nothing, nothing. I mean, not that first one, because it's not just simply. Why can't it just, if it's two for two? But is it two for two? And that's the question, right? Still, I mean, he has.
We're good? All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the April meeting of the Town and Unicool Planning Commission. Everybody will stand first, we'll do the invocation and the pledge.
Lord, thank you for the Town and Unicool. Thank you for letting us live here and love this place, care about it. Give us wisdom as we conduct the town's business this evening, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Debbie, would you call the roll, please?
Captain Roll, I'm here. Billy Harden.
Here. Here.
One Redford. Here. Carl Stae.
Here.
Bill Ness.
Here.
Amy King.
Here. Okay, everybody has a copy of the meeting minutes from last month's meeting? Comments or questions? Can we have a motion and a second to approve last month's meeting minutes? Debbie?
Captain Bowlin. Yes. Ellen Harden.
Yes. Yes.
One Redford. Yes. Carl Stae.
Yes.
Bill Ness.
Yes.
Amy King.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, we don't have anything on our announcements.
What about these called meeting?
Second set of minutes.
Oh, we got a second set of minutes, all right, sorry about that. We do, we do, we've got a second set of minutes for the March 18th special call meeting.
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay, motion to approve and second to the special call meeting minutes, any comments? Debbie?
Captain Bowlin, yes. Billy Harden.
Yes.
Carl Stae.
Yes.
One Redford. Yes. Carl Stae.
Yes.
Bill Ness.
Yes.
Amy King.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right, now, go ahead myself, all right. Next item, announcements, we don't have any. Moving on, new business, first item, review ordinance for the Town and Unicool for the purpose of adding an industrial overlay district. Who would like to present that? Explain what we got.
Fine, so it should be in your packet. And what it is, is it's an overlay district to, and in a way over agricultural, industrial, both and both of the industrial districts, and what it is, is another set of regulations that it lays on top of the already existing, that I mean, so it will still be an agricultural or an M1 zone, just with an additional zone on top of it, is what essentially what overlay district does. And it does prohibit some uses, it allows some uses that aren't typically there, and it provides a set of regulations and everything that has to be followed through it.
Somebody got a questions on it?
It seems as though if you overlaid heavy industrial over residential, that's kind of unrestricted or opening up the floodgates for who knows why. Help, help change my mind.
It still doesn't allow for a lot of the industrial uses that you're going to think of, or any of your heavier uses, like nuclear plants or anything like that. And there are prohibited uses even in the A1 zone that typically are allowed in your M1, but it's prohibited in the A, if it's overlaying on the A1 zone. So you still can't have your methadone clinics or pain clinics or anything like that if it's, if the overlay district is put on an agricultural side. So it's still limiting some of that.
Was this a recommendation from your office?
It was a joint effort between Town and Unicool and me putting it together.
Okay.
In consultation with a land use attorney from Nashville.
On forever.
Well, how, how does this coexist with the current that two acres and that two acres only restriction that is in place with the town? For Summers Taylor facility, you know, they are perfectly able to operate at the existing location. And the town ordinance says, and that's it. So how does that square with making this concession?
Well, thanks for one thing, it puts another tool in our toolbox, and we can have some discretion. Whenever an industry wants to move into our area, we make it accommodate them with an overlay like this.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a point.
Okay.
And that just simply is that we, we know what the item is that's for considerations for board to really discuss it in depth to take any action. If we were choosing to take any action, we do need a motion and a second on the floor so then we can get into your discussion. If there's citizens that wants to address, you know, that's a whole different topic. Do we get out any comment cards? So we don't know who might want to speak for it or against it. But I would suggest, just from a parliamentary procedure standpoint, that we have a motion of some form at on the floor before we get into the discussion of it.
All right, someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we have discussion on the floor.
I'll say.
We had a motion to approve. We, we need, we really, to have a discussion, we really need some kind of action. There are motion to approve, motion to deny, motion to table. We need something that's an action.
All right, open the discussion, I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Else I could say it. All right, motion approved and a second now we can discuss, so. You had your question. Did you get an answer?
I still don't think I quite understand your question.
There is currently in place an ordinance that says they can operate an asphalt production facility on the designated two acre site. Is that, is that correct?
I think the whole.
Not a four, they are grandfathered in.
They are grandfathered in. Yeah.
Which thereby allows them to have asphalt production at that location.
And I think Mr. Summers came to the board, he addressed us through zoning, through Zoom, that he said that if, you know, if we didn't approve any further on that, that he could, he could put the asphalt plant where it was, take out the old and put the new in.
Yes, you can do that. This document that we worked a good bit on to construct is not necessarily only applied to so much tailing, this could apply to any industry. And we're so focused on so much tailing.
No, well, yes, but.
That is the.
If the, if the asphalt plant is not before us, this would not be here.
The wording, and I just want to make clear that the wording on this document is general for industrial overlay. The wording on this document before you is still open for some changes. Even if Planning Commission tonight does approve this and it goes to BMA, it still has another public hearing, it still has another BMA reading, and it can be tweaked and changed even up till that second reading. So there's still opportunity for changes, there's some concern about some other input. Input can continue. The part of the impetus for this is none of us were in favor of rezoning. We wanted to avoid rezoning, that is perpetual forever thing, and we did not want to rezone. This protects the town from rezoning, yes, and talk to your point, Summers Taylor has expressed their desire to relocate their plant on a three acre tract of two parcels, which is farther back at the quarry, which is less visible from the highway, less, less visible from line of sight. It's an attempt to, to bridge the gap over the differences.
I have a question, do we ever find out if the whole five acres was grandfathered in or just those two acres?
The parcel is actually a larger parcel than that, and I think it's Summers Taylor's position that the whole parcel is resumed, or is a non-conformant use that they can utilize in their operation. There's a lot of history that's on the other side of that argument, specifically in prior owner made some improvements to that property in time before this board, before BMA, there was several proceedings where they dealt with that whole concept of what amount of land you're using for this non-conformant use. So there's that, there's also some area maps which show, ours on board is going to affect in December of 1995, there's some area maps that show what was there and what wasn't there before that time. But that's really not something we have to decide through the day, or any board for the town for that matter has to decide. As the owner of the property now, Summers Taylor has whatever non-conformant use rights coming with that parcel, and so that, that probably is a decision for another day, is my belief, because there's, there's arguments on both sides of that issue. The five acres, or not five acres, the other three acres that are in issue here in Summers Taylor's request, and by the way, there's, Summers Taylor don't have anything before this morning, they're not asking for anything. This, the idea of this overlay zone was suggested through consultation with others about another way to deal with this, because the request that Summers Taylor, of course, had put before this board, which she did not, was to rezone all of that property, the 12 acres, which includes the two acres and then three more acres of the vote, they wanted to resume it all, too. And that has very far-reaching impact for that property. When you go back, we're back in time to 1995 and look at what was going on in the town and how to withdraw it, something like that, I think that, I'm one town attorney, and so I can't, I can't speak to it totally, that I can look back at the records, and, and I know, I don't know if Mr. Ness, I don't know his, his memory involved, but I go back to, I'm sure it was that probably at that time. But I know that, that board looked at this and knew that there was a rock quarry there, and knew that there had been asphalt plant operations at there, and we saw the ordinance going into place, which said, no asphalt plants in the town, but there wasn't a asphalt plant operating. And so one way to approach them is to look at it and say, where, what are your uses? And if there are though, and, and they could have at that time said, this is going to be an industrial zone, because we've got heavy industry right here. But they did, and they didn't do that throughout the town, and I'm not in any way criticizing that, what I'm just saying, what happened, the reality is that most of our town was zoned agricultural. There's obviously some exceptions to that, but we've got vast areas of the town that the use doesn't necessarily comply with the zone, because it's just is what is, and it's some agricultural, we're a rural town, and we recognize that and we like it. But in this particular situation, in this location, predating the zone ordinance, there was some industrial use, we know that, and the board chose not to zone it heavy industrial. The request of a landowner now is to rezone the whole thing, heavy industrial, and this board has recommended against it. And so the industrial overlay zone idea came up, not for me, but from the standpoint of, here's another way to address the request of a landowner if they should choose to ask to be included in this overlay zone. They haven't done it yet, but we don't, it hasn't been enacted yet. So where we are is, this board looking at it to see whether you recommend it to the BMA as being another tool that can be used to address these things. If you break down through this, it has a lot of restrictions on the uses, it prohibits a whole lot of things that would be allowed in an M2 zone. And it is tailored pretty closely as far as the permitted uses towards construction materials production. And so there are different uses that could be made, and it could overlay an agricultural zone, or it could overlay a couple of other industrial type zones. But it's a way of the town having some control over wide open M2 or other industrial zoning, and you can make any use of it if you want, though. This is a way, if someone sees it, to subject their land to industrial overlay zone, they're going in knowing they're subject to these restrictions. And so that's how it was put together, was to limit farther than M2 zone.
Lewis, I think your recollection of what we were trying to do at that point when we made the city is correct. We were aware of the fact that there were two existing property, the rock quarry and the asphalt plant. And we're trying to limit, we couldn't do anything about it. But we knew they were there, and we're trying to maintain that and constrict it to what it is. My question lies with the existing two acres, or say two acres for purpose. What happens to those two acres if we do the overlay? So does that negate what they are zoned as now, the two acres that they're currently on, then the new overlay two acres? What if, in this case, if it's Summers Taylor, they end up terminating that, if it's just a short-term project or long-term engagement, I'm not sure. If they do, then what happens to that overlay? Does it go back to the original, or how's that?
Back to the original, if enough time passed.
So then, if, if they go up to this one, then what happens to the other, the current two acres?
Well, we don't have a request from the, they don't have a request that the board, the board was to resume the M2, we don't have a request to go into this, although I think they might be looking very carefully at this for that purpose. And we don't know what portion of the property that we say that wanted the industrial overlay zone to go over, because we just don't have that request in front of us. But it is clear, pretty way, these overlays are restricted, that if you don't make that use, that you offer to the town and say, here's the use I'm going to make of it, you don't make that use for a sufficient period of time, it doesn't apply.
But it doesn't prohibit the current site from operating in that capacity also? Is it an increase of four?
Yes, the way that this is constructed is you ask for this industrial overlay zone to apply to your property that now has a, a permitted non-conformant use, then it says there's only one location for that production facility. You can only have it in one place, not to, not move around one place.
But with that three acres, does that give them more air type, where they can produce more asphalt, because they've got another extra acre, where the state would permit them to do more?
Well, they have their, their air quality permit, I think, to operate at the upper location, which is what they have wanted all of that into resuming to encompass. So it all depends on the capacity of the equipment that they install, and understand they can install whatever equipment they want to now, they're non-conformant use land, they just have to get another permit that applies to that section, we can't control really what equipment they use in that. That relates more to the production through the air quality.
So the state could permit them to do actually more than they can on the two acres?
Both to use the same piece of equipment, the permit's on the, I thought, the permit was on the equipment. The production based on the equipment, so if the equipment sat on the two acre tract, or it sat on the three acre tract, it's still the same piece of equipment.
Well, that would be something we'd have to find out, really, I think that's something we, you know, see if it's comparable, or if they got more, if they did, then you're actually getting more protection.
There's, there's a lot of information on that that's been shared in the meetings that the state has done on air quality permit, all that, that is out there. I don't have it right in front of me, but it's a lot of that information. After, in your application process, permitting process, it's.
There is, I've also got a copy of a letter from Davis and Whitlock Environmental Law, and it seemed pretty clearly to speak against this overlay district. Which came first, the chicken or the egg on this one? Because this, this one says it'll be okay, and this one says it won't be okay, so.
Yeah, I guess that's a question I had, is, I always thought overlay districts added, or over more restrict, added more restrictions to the underlying zoning, the original zoning. So if you had a residential section and you wanted to limit, you know, people tearing down historic houses, you know, put an overlay, this, we've got a piece of agricultural land or, or, you know, sown agricultural, and now we want to put a industrial overlay on it, I didn't think that, that's, you're basically broadening. You know, you're not limiting, you're, you're adding zoning, you're adding things that you can do. Is that what an overlay is? I mean, is that, is that the purpose?
Well, there's lots, there, there are lots of different types of overlays. And I posed that specific question to the land use attorney, the attorney specialized in land use, to say, is that a problem with doing industrial overlay zone? And he had not. That if you were held to all the restrictions of the original zoning, then that you might as well just stayed at that zone.
So an overlay basically just then does away with the underlying.
Well, some of this, some of this overlay is much more restrictive than having. That's, that's the trial.
And those restrictions are in the packet itself, and that proposed, the proposed ordinance here? Should we review those restrictions, so we're aware of what we, I don't know if everyone's aware of what.
No, I mean, everybody got a, should have gotten a copy of this Friday, of course. You know, you know, the, the permitted uses, it says, are those in the underlying zoning district and construction-related materials production facilities. And then prohibited uses, nuclear power plants of similar use, junkyards, chemical plants, automobile salvage yards, dumper landfill, fireworks manufacturing, or the manufacturing ammunition or explosives, pain clinics, and in any A1 zone overlaying by industrial overlay zoning, adult entertainment and methadone clinics are prohibited. And that's, that's the, that's the list.
Is this overlay an island that we're proposing?
We're not proposing this.
Or, or whatever this is.
Yeah. This doesn't include application to any particular piece of property.
This is.
This is something that can be done in the town. If someone applies for it, and if it's approved through all of the states, the main commission board, and all of the states.
What this says then is that if you are a property owner, you could come and say, hey, I want an overlay district on my parcel for this purpose.
But we don't currently have that request.
No.
We do not.
Okay.
If, if you'll look at the next section, I know Chairman Hopson was trying to be, you know, instructive there, you know, with everybody, what was the board, but if you look at the development standards at section seven, 13.7, in addition to that, there are islands A through L, and, and I guess there's, there's a lot more restrictions in there, it wouldn't necessarily apply to A1. When you get down to L, that's the last one, it says, in any event, the permitted use consists of a physical plant or protection or construction-related material, there shall be only one such physical plant, or age-appropriate industrial overlay district. So it's limited to one use on whatever area that a ground is applied to.
If Mr. Summers decides to sell or anything, does that apply to the next person, or is it stay strictly with him?
It applies.
It applies, so somebody could go to the next one, and then they could close it down and do something else with it.
Well, that only means that the changes to the lack of use for the required time, stopping that use there, and that would take it back to the island zone, or if it was a descent.
And on that point, if, following up on what one that had said, if, if, if this goes through, Summers Taylor operates, the Summers Taylor, Summers Taylor sells that property, someone could automatically come into this overlay, they would have to come and present a request to come into the overlay, and have to get approval to operate in the overlay.
Are you sure?
So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, is that, and Eric, all the examples that we read, when, when overlays are added into a planning, high handbook guide ordinance in a town, just because the overlay is there, doesn't mean that anyone automatically can come in, they have to apply, they have to request to be in the overlay, and they have to meet their criteria to be allowed in the overlay. If in the future, if this all goes through, and Summers Taylor is operating, if they were to sell that property and somebody else wanted to come in, they still have to come to the town and request to be in that overlay.
That's my understanding of an overlay, and it can be written that it's clear to that point, that there's never any confusion, but the way it is, is you have to have like an application to request to be the overlay.
So another land purchaser is not automatically approved.
So it doesn't translate, when it needs, you need to say that in there.
Okay, and the wording can be continued to.
Yeah, I'm saying.
I think we're confusing two things. From, from what I'm hearing, that, this might just, I might be misunderstanding, but one concept is, does it run with the land? It's a legal term.
Yeah.
Does it go with this piece of land? It does. Industrial overlay zone, years, and it was three years, after the, if the use starts. Okay. The other concept that I hear you all talking about, I think, is, does this just automatically apply to some of these property? And the answer, I think that's the question you were asking, and the answer that is no. Similarly, it would be like, say, we've got five or six zones in the town, just because those numbers of zones exist, and upon the broad scene, it's not, not said, said sense. But just because of, let's say, residential, just because a residential zone exists, doesn't mean your property's in the residential zone, it's how you're zoned, and this is a zoning action, if somebody wants to apply to be part of an industrial overlay.
And that takes away spot zoning, too.
Well.
Or not, right away.
Yeah, it depends on the point there. But please understand, I'm not taking either side of this argument, that's not my job. My job is just to try to help get before the board, so you all understand it, what the possibility that's been recommended to us, as a way to not rezonate this property with all the things that go with it in the zone, and yet make the best use of the restricted power that the planning commission, the board has, to protect the citizens who have their, their strong. to protect these citizens who have very, very strong feelings about all of this. It's it's an effort to have sound planning and these tools that protects the land values of those that are in on it, protects from all the things that have been a concern. And and Ms. Erica worked real hard after all these ideas came together, the draft sent me that, I wish that, I worked on it some as well. And, you know, it just takes time to get that done and that's the reason it came to you all on Friday. And it's not something that applies to any piece of land right now. It's just a question of, is this a tool that the town wants to have in some format to deal with zoning requests? That if it were granted, it would have a whole lot of implications potentially in future. We want to tear that down. That's what he does.
So the existing plant, where it is, is it into zone, correct?
That's that is what was requested before. That was denied by this board. It's not recommended to be in that. The land presently that was subject to that into request is agricultural, A1, like much of the town is. And the industrial overlay zone is that's before you is a possibility of another regulation, another process that could apply to properties in the town. If someone applies for that and it's approved by by this board. The new thing, in other words.
Yeah. Existing point is A1. Say, if it's A1 and its grandfather, because it was in operation before the town.
Right. And we're saying that would remain A1?
It would not change the zone. It would it would be A1 would be, if I if I, if I applied for it, I haven't applied for it yet. But if I did, then it would be A1 with the industrial overlay zone over that if this were to end or if it were to end off.
Yes, this is, you know, again, everybody knows this is, this is all about Summers and Taylor. But this is for any any business that wants to come in, they can request this. Now, you know, again, it it all comes back to Summers and Taylor. Can you tell us what your long term, what do you see? How do you see this progressing? If this gets through here.
For Summers Taylor?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, what's, you know, there's there's been discussions.
If this passes, if this passes this board to them, it can still be worked on, which we we said in there that we wanted to talk about, like the the land resales or something, we want to make sure to put that in there. The board, the board of the area and all of them, if the planning commission approves this, it'll be recommended for the BMA. It has to go through two readings. It will still have public hearing. Summers Taylor then, once this gets passed, can can look at this and say, okay, do we want to be in that area? Do we want to operate in that area? If this area is what is going to be overlaying on those two parcels that we want to be on, this is what we're going to have to work under. We're going to have to work by these constrictions, you know, these guidelines, these limitations, these requests for buffering and parking and dust control. And, I mean, we've even got dust control in there, lining. You know, we tried to think of the things that we were hearing from citizens that we could actually say something about. Unfortunately, we can't then with smell. But that's also a complaint, but there's no regulations on smell. Anyway, they will have to come, they, Summer Taylor, will have to come and request to the planning commission that they want to be part of this industrial overlay. They have to bring site plan. Okay, then the planning commission says, okay, you need the criteria. You you can or you don't need the criteria, you cannot. And if none of that pans out, they are still grandfathered in on that other tract. It was. When I look at that property up there, I know the word expansion has just run everybody for a loop. They will extend use of that property if that's having to drive over larger sections of those parcels. But their production will be that one point. Whether it sits on the old two acres or whether it sits on the three. So the production of asphalt is based on the machine they're going to have there, the equipment, not where it's located. The expansion piece of them being able to drive across more parcels or have a shed to work on trucks and whatnot. Yeah, they may spread out, they may have rock piles here or here, but their production is going to be with one machine. Whether that machine is located on the three acres or whether it's located on the two. But the site that, when I look at the site where they want to operate, they're farther up the mountain. There's more trees, there's more buffer between that operation and coming forward. The height, the height of the old paths is really tall. There's, I think we talked about, is is still less than fifty feet high. You're not going to be able to see a lot of it through the trees, even in the winter. The summer will be even better. So in terms of the incly, I think it's a benefit for the town. And I I did not like rezoning. I did not personally want to rezone. You rezone, it's there forever.
Right.
You have no restrictions or guidelines. And and so when we started reaching out, we got this land use attorney with a lot of experience. And he he made some very specific, we sent him the document, we sent him everything, you know, clear data. We sent him everything, you know, status had found, you know, from the courthouse, the deeds, the document, the aerial photos for years back, the Tennessee code that we were thinking apply. We sent things that had been submitted to the town last summer, they're not site plans, just information, you know, about emissions and, you know, a lot of their information from their permits. We sent it all to Mr. Murphy. He reviewed it all and and he came back with a recommendation. It said, if the town wants to have, I'm using this word, he didn't use a sort of, if the town wants to have a heavier hand in controlling what happens on that tract of land, I suggest an industrial overlay. So then Erica was back involved and she began to research it in terms of being a city planner. We found one, Erica, we reviewed about six out of town that had overlays. And they were all kinds of purposes, gateway enhancement, industrial, historic.
Historic is a big one, but it was all.
There was a variety, a variety.
We have a couple that was industrial, so that's what we really liked to start. But we looked at the layout and format of all of them.
That's all of the information.
But if they stay right where they are, there's no rezoning, they just use.
We're not rezoning anyway. Rezoning is also a.
Overlay, they're just restricted, we know how much emissions they are allowed to put out.
Okay, and that's based on the equipment and they've already got a permit for that piece of equipment. The emissions is based on the equipment. And I just follow on that.
That's right. Yeah.
The emissions.
That on the.
And the permit.
Can't do any more.
No, it's based on the piece of equipment.
It's not based on the land, yeah.
To use, not how much land they're on, but.
It is type of land, but they tend to on a location.
A location, but the land doesn't produce the emissions, the equipment does.
You know, when we had our original site tour and Mr. Summers presented what he, what his vision was, moving it to that location, you know, that location there behind the trees, further away from the interstate, less visible. You know, I I was, I could have supported that. But then, of course, they came and wanted
Fifteen acres.
All fifteen acres rezoned and different, different proposal entirely. So, you know, again, I I think that people need to realize there's going to be an asphalt plant one way or the other. Okay, we cannot keep them from having an asphalt plant. They are grandfathered in, they have that right. If we do nothing, they can still have that asphalt plant on that existing two acres. Okay? I think, please hold your comments, okay, you'll have, you'll have a chance, all right, you'll have a chance. They have that right to have that asphalt plant. I think what we need to realize is what what what's in our powers where they have it, is where they locate it. Do we want it right where it is now? Or do we want to move it where, again, it's a little, little further away from everything, behind the trees, less visible, still going to be there, but probably a better place? So if if that's the ultimate goal.
And I think this allows us to allow us having to rezone. I think rezoning was just so distasteful.
Well, again, with the rezoning, there is no restrictions, it's.
No, we, it was so distasteful. So I think this is an attempt to bridge the divide.
With the outcome being, okay, what's the outcome, period? I mean, what what will the outcome give us?
Well.
If this were to.
It will, it will put oversight on the request that Summers Taylor brings to the planning commission to request to be located in that industrial overlay. They have to about it. I have to about it.
Dust rules.
By these things. And if if we still want to to work in this document, we can, we can still do some work in this time. We've got two more readings to go and we will continue to be working, citizens will continue to hear from planning commission. We'll continue to to hear from advisors. Okay, how to handle the continued topics that come up, that it's a way for the town to to just put a handle on it without opening us up to just rezoning. It gives us some control that we would not have otherwise. We can leave them on that little tractor truck that's right there by the house.
Oh, I agree, I understand.
There's just not.
The usage of the other property, the footprint, will it change the footprint? Again, because of the island effect, by the island, I'm saying we're placing it in a different location. Now, you can't use helicopters to come in and out of there to take the asphalt. So that footprint in itself, how does that change that whole footprint? And does that, is that allowable in this overlay to get to it? Because often you hear of the stuff they take off current roads and the the different stones that are produced. Are they going to be piled up and utilized in that agriculture area? You know, is that still permissible under the current contract? So there would be a chance there.
That that would be permissible, just like it would be permissible for me with a big pile of gravel in my yard.
Right. So what I'm saying is that there's no change there.
Not there, correct.
But that footprint of the exact of the existing building is the footprint we're trying to move into a different location.
Correct.
So the land usage of the others is no avoid.
Well, if we allow them to move on to that other part, this overlay would give us more control.
Now, they can still put maintenance shed there, the, which, Bill, you weren't on the board, I apologize, when we did feel good to do that tour, but there's a road that runs from the Marbleton Roadside, runs down, and it comes out on Gilbarla.
Trust me.
So, okay, so that road can still be in use because it's on their parcels, it's on their property. It doesn't cross anybody else's property. So they can still go up at a little extension of Marbleton and down to Gilbarla or whichever way they decide to run. I mean, that's agricultural.
Didn't they say that they use one road to go in and one road to come out?
Well, I think they're starting with them and go all the way and keep going one direction.
Yeah, leave it from all the traffic policy.
Or have to turn around and back up.
Let me ask again. What the person you spoke to in Nashville seems to be in conflict with Davis and Whitlock and and their take on the environmental overlay?
That would be correct. They are not in agreement. Their interpretation of the law is different, or how this applies is different. We, when we, we've heard this before, Corvus Letterton, we've been told that before. And I think Ms. Davis went back to Mr. Murphy in Nashville to say, we we've had, you know, attorney representing citizens tell us that this isn't how this works. And he said, this is how this can work, it can. So there is a difference of opinion there.
My question to Debbie, when you researched the other municipalities that use this overlay, did you call them and talk with them or?
Debbie didn't do me.
Did she didn't do it?
That's their.
Debbie, did you talk to them? Because it would be interesting to know how long they've had it and used and how it's played out.
Some of them were dated, well, they were all different kinds.
Right.
Yeah, some of them were, one of them.
They're back in the nineties.
Was back in the nineties, when I know it was enacted. But the others, I can't tell you how long they've been in use. And and one of them was Nervous Towns, overlay district. And I do know their planners, so I can reach out and ask how long they've had that one in use.
It just, I'm curious on how it's played out.
Yeah, and I, he has talked about it a little in some conferences and everything I've been at, he has been at. And they haven't had an issue, but theirs isn't industrial, it is a different type of overlay. But they found it to be very useful for them. Again, it is a different type of overlay district, but they hadn't had any issues that he had told anyone else.
The principle of the district is to create criteria, bro. If you want to be in the district, you have to make these criteria. That's where it gives us a little more insight about what it looks like. You know, what's around the landscape.
In the application process, site plan, it shows exactly what you're going to do. You know, and it tells you some, you can do, you can do this. And and there's some things you have to do in order to to build. But there's not as much oversight in terms of, like I said, this is written in A1, and that can be expanded on what the restrictions and the criteria are. We tried to discern what might be a concern to citizens and write that in there. Just the information we could get and put that in here and for some of the things we thought of. And just to try to have that greater control than you would have with an into zone. Or any zone for that now, because you know, you probably design a certain way and you only get rights.
What is, what's the benefit? What's the direct benefit to the town of Unicoi for making this accommodation? So that it gives Summers and Taylor an opportunity to, you know, reshape how they're, how that location would flow for sure?
Well, I'm not here to argue Summers Taylor's side of this.
No.
My my job, my job is to represent the town, and so I can't. And so Summers Taylor is, you know, they're very relevant to make a near case known. One consequence, I guess, that that is obvious if the town decided they want this tool and it's out there as a possible way of resolving this is we're not in court, having the court say very, very highly of an into zone or not. We're not having someone else tell us how it's going to work. We have designed the tool ourselves through this body's input, through the BMA's input, the citizens' input. As to how we want to control the land use in our town, we're doing it ourselves. We're not having somebody else tell us how we have to do it. Courts do make orders where they say this will be allowed. And I'm not saying that would happen in this situation if into zoning is denied and we don't do any of this. But I'm just saying, we're controlling our destiny. It's just like the community starting out with a zoning plan. That's an effort at controlling our destiny and how things are going to move forward. And I know this has been a subject of great concern to all these sign folks here and all of you all, everybody. And I, really, I feel pretty lucky here that I don't have to make policy on this. I'm glad I don't have to. These are hard choices and it's hard things for the citizens who've worked hard and, you know, looked up all this stuff and learned as to the pitfalls that are possibly here. This is tough stuff. And so what we have to decide is in terms of the benefit, do we want to design how it's going to move forward or do we want it to be driven by a conflict and what happens in court ultimately? Because, you know, this this situation had long potential for litigation written all over.
Is that the the next inevitable thing that would come down?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Well, that is inevitable with debts and taxes, except in Unicoi, you don't have property taxes in other towns in Unicoi. And I, I stole that from somebody else, I don't know who said that. But anyway, you know, that's a possibility. That's something that we have to look at long run. Is that either side gets not satisfied with the results of these actions being ran off?
And then you, right, you've got that cost and then whatever the judge says is, is it, okay? This, you know, again, it goes back to, there's going to be an asphalt plant. And this allows us a little more control where it actually is. And we can put some, some more restrictions than what a standard M two zone would.
Cause to do what they want to do, they need to move on those other parcels. And this puts us ahead of the curve on that. It gives us a little bit of control if we can pass this.
Yeah, still, still I'd say it's going to happen. It just says, this is, this, this is a choice, this is an option.
And let me add, you know, by this, there's no guarantee that this board recognizes you and might pass it. If everyone has to be included, if I think they would, because that's a clear pathway for them that have the use that they want, which is to move their existing plant away to a different plant, they are on a different section. Um, but I know that that's what they're doing. So there's, there's a lot that could happen that I think still would be perceived in M two zones.
And if they didn't move, if they fail in any of these stipulations they've got, if they didn't do some of them, there's a lot. Any other questions from the board before I open it up to the citizens? All right, um, we'll, we'll give you all a chance to talk if everybody can, can talk. Uh, please keep it to three minutes. Uh, no, you know, no applause and cheers and everything like that, unless you keep it orderly. And again, we'll let you all have your say, okay? Charlie?
Couple of things to answer your question, Wanda. The cats plant was made here in the bottom twenty seven thousand tons. At the Summers Taylor permit is up to a hundred thousand. And to your question, yes, the footprints, that's all for those two. And I was told today that they're already dumping asphalt garbage up there in their existing two acres, just letting you know. It's, it's interesting that I've just heard these words, if the town wants to have, if the town wants, well, let me say first, overlay is not people using this. I remember that in my first training. This is my, how this works, tip. If the town wants to have, and I just remind everyone here that a little over two years ago, Johnson City closed the golf course. And I remember the uproar from some people who said, the town's got to do something. The town's got to do something. And in that particular situation, there was nothing the town could do. I'm sorry, we couldn't find a golf course. But in this particular situation, the town can do something. They don't have to do this expansion. And it is an expansion. Anyone you look at it, it's an expansion.
Could you elaborate on that? I don't quite understand.
Two acres to five acres or whatever, fifteen if they take, we do the whole overlay. And it's an expansion.
Well, that's point of clarification.
They do on that property, but we're not, right now, they do not have permission to have a plant on that property.
Correct.
Just the two acres.
Correct.
So my concern and my question to anybody in this room is, why would you give them more property to own now?
Well, I missed something somewhere and I just need clarification. Overlay for two acres, is that not true?
There is no, there is no overlay. This is not proposed on anything. This is just.
I understand, but I'm saying, are we not taking the two acres worth that?
They're asking for additional.
We don't have any.
They have answers.
That's a question.
We're looking at additional. So, but my final point before I run out of time is, I've been on this board. And if you had come to me and said, we're going to do an overlay, I would have said, I'm not quite sure. I have just made a few thoughts about. So I think one of my concerns is you're making a decision that's going to impact us for a long time. And maybe you need more information.
Thank you. Court?
Yeah, this is. It's kind of funny you've been hearing us say these things, but my wife and I have been involved in this for ten months. I never had the, let's give you backups, may first interest in asphalt. I've thought, I'm so quick in my drive. We know a awful lot about it. I mean, I know a mess of this stuff. I wish I could give a one hour tutorial here because I listen to your talk and you've been only a little bit involved in it in varying ways across the. I know a lot of, I can, I can talk very factually and objectively and answer questions in very factual, objective and biased way. Without all this and say, yes, that's right, but no, that's wrong. And this is how it's wrong. So that's the lead and I'm just following up on what Charlie said here and we can talk about this. If it's possible procedurally, I wish you could table this today. Because I think you guys know enough to move on an issue that's going to totally affect the future of this town permanently. This is not just about Summers Taylor, is it all around? It's about, it affects the entire town now because this overlay, we discussed it at the meeting a week ago, which was going to be, I think, at the time, potentially, even though we just talked about potentially applying only to Summers Taylor or the, or for a game of playing here. Instead of applying now potentially across the whole town, if you read the, anybody owns one acre of land, apply for industrial overlay there next to their neighbor who's got a nice house on the other side of the nice house. You can put in a boat manufacturing by making boats out of fiberglass or whatever. Yeah, anything that's not precluded on that little short list of massage parlors and adult entertainment and government clinics or whatever it is, anything, anything else they want to do that's industrial, they could do if the board allowed. Now they make people go out, but they could. And I'm just going to say, since I've already used up half my time talking about stuff I haven't wanted to talk about, I wish you could table this. But anyway, twenty five years ago, the first leaders of this town could have a lot of time and thought to developing a very comprehensive and thorough land use comprehensive plan that was, you know, surprisingly able to do exactly what United States, certainly well done. Hard work, put together in an expert way. And they geared it around a visionist town that is based on the beauty of the town, of the area that we live in, the rural nature of it, and it was geared to agriculture and retail business, tourism and things like that. There was, there was a provision for industrial use and industrial use. There is an empty district down there, getting the tire plants in. But, um, though they took a lot of effort in, in doing that and what you're giving presented here with tonight, not by Summers Taylor, but by the town government itself, really is a way of undermining that comprehensive town plan that they put together as a project back then. Now, things evolve, times change, towns change. But Unicorn clears, I mean, this, this plan was put together really last week. And the area Melpass there, we've been a really good job of getting it together in a week. I believe both do it. They will put it out at five oh three Friday afternoon, on a good Friday, a weekend, a holiday weekend for you all to consider here today. And I just don't think we do enough to move on something so important, the future of this town. It encompasses the whole town, not just the six acres in this county. So Unicorn clears position with regard to this, still is what it was at the beginning, which is the rules you have in place for now, Summers Taylor would operate, even then there's some technically a question of that, but we won't go there, to operate on that two acres and a grandfather plan, do what they do and continue doing that. And they even said, we could do that. But, um, that's our position that we think the town should stick to that. And it's simple, we can do, and why there's such a complication about it. What's been done here is to, um, there's no real significant benefit to the town or its residents for the land being operated. The operation, the expansion is not just the land, it's the, all of the stuff that goes into a plan. It's not just the plan, it's the whole operation of asphalt facility is conveyor belts and crushers and piles of rack, which is reclaimed asphalt. There's equipment, heavy equipment, there's storage equipment, there's maintenance equipment, it's all kind of stuff. So we think this can be possibly worked out. It makes fourteen hundred residents of, uh, are within a mile of this sub-plant, but, um, and to the benefit of Summers Taylor. But there's possible ways to compromise on this, but it can't be worked out tonight, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you, Court.
It's not this industrial overlay plan. Thank you.
Charlie, I'm popping in just a few responses. Um, Grant, I want to, excuse me, my grand, Court, I want to correct something. I think you said that is just simply not true. Nobody can just randomly come in and say, I want to have an industrial overlay here next to my neighbor's house. You have to apply to be in the industrial overlay. They have to come before a planning commission. Surely anybody with any common sense isn't going to let a fiberglass boat manufacturer operate next to the house. Okay? They have to apply.
That's right.
They cannot just open it.
Sure.
Okay, so the verbiage is if, yeah, they could just come in and open and do anything they want. That's not true. I'm just clarifying, clarifying, just clarifying. Okay, um, and talking about the beauty of the town, how, I guess I don't understand how moving the plant back on that property doesn't benefit the visual beauty of that section when you drive down the interstate. But the plant is out there. So I, I think that is an attempt to improve. That old cats plant is ugly. Okay, it's ugly.
Now, you've had, you've had your time, but there's.
I just wanted to have those comments.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
You're right, it would be prettier to have it behind the trees on the big castle. But the entire fifteen acres is going to be open to this operation.
If they operate on two acres, they've still got the whole fifteen, they can put piles or do whatever they want on. It's agricultural, like. It's agricultural.
You else, anybody else? Yes, sir.
I stand in opposition to this, you can figure that out in two seconds. You cause I'm a resident and I'm going to be under the book. The thing we, that the state doesn't protect us from, that I'm hoping my town will protect us from, is the spench, that all this extra asphalt that they're going to be making and all this rack and they're going to be storing and all this, this acreage that they're not entitled to do it on right now. The only thing that stands in between us and that reality forever is this board and our chairman. Now, I assume, Mayor, that your recommendations to this board is act tight. Then seven, seven thirteen dot one, establishment purpose, that's the first we tear out. The third vote is the max size, manufacturing and industrial potential for the community, but that adversely affecting the residential environment at its face. This thing is going to destroy ten percent of the retail, of the real estate value for people within my office. There is ten pages of Google that can show you. It's not, it hasn't been addressed by any of us to any great degree. But if we maximize the manufacturing potential, that's the verdict. Without adversely affecting the residential environment, that's the fixed number. You can't quit this huge plant, allow them to grow this huge plant without destroying our homes. So at its face, you're out of business unless you ignore. Yeah, and, and the use cases that are, that are in this are, are, are kind of insulting to them. There are no lever colonies, you know, there's all that stuff. But if Summers Taylor, if Summers Taylor got into the sledgehammer, why should I be confident that this process is going to protect us from the sledgehammer? If, if, if we had, we build a home with the protection of the laws that you had in foresight to draw on and to defend this town. They bought that land with those laws in place. If those laws stay in place unprotected, they can do what they want on the tractors that they own. They can't do what they want on their reservations that they got and expect somebody here all over to give them what they wanted to do with that one. I'm perfectly happy with, there will be an asphalt plant, there was an asphalt plant. But I'm not happy with what we're proposing to allow them to do and what it's going to do to me and my neighbors. And nobody is holding what offsets a hundred thousand dollars of value items. I can't, I haven't heard anybody address that. And I'm not the one that's going to lose the most by law.
Can I ask a question for clarification? And I'm asking this with all sincerity. Do you, you feel differently if the, the same double drum operation? You feel differently if that same double drum operation were located where the old cats plant was? But you're not okay with it being up on the other track?
My point is apples to apples. They're on two acres, they can make that drum, that double drum operate on two acres. That's what they want. That's what I want. And as the status quo, that doesn't require this town to change any because they make the assumption that they could get this town to change.
Okay. Well, this was our idea, I'm going to tell you, they didn't have anything to do with this. This fits restrictions on them, they were less likely probably want it. But I'm going to ask again for clarification purposes so that I understand. Um, okay, so if they stay on the two acres, that's much more palatable. And I'm going to make an assumption, so I want you to validate it for me if I make it correctly or correct me if I make it wrong, okay? Um, there's, there's code that says that non-conforming use, you can't expand in ways that da, 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 da. Is, is that, is that what you're holding in your pocket to say that they are not allowed to have a pile of gravel and not allowed to have a pile of, you know, rack and not any, on any of their own properties or whatever? Cause I don't think there's anything that protects that.
I can answer, I can, by addressing a statement that you made a little earlier.
Okay.
Where you can put a pile of gravel in your yard. I've got a pile of gravel in my yard. Why do you recommend that? But I'm not making concrete out of someone that owes people because that, I'm not allowed to do one of those. And they're not allowed to do one, one art.
But they would be allowed to do on the two acre track.
On the two acres.
So they just pick up the gravel and right, right here.
Right away from them and they follow. I don't want to give them a life they didn't want.
Okay, I, I am, I'm just, I am being absolutely honest with you. I'm going to transparent honest with you. I struggle, struggle, struggle to understand if they, if they can put these piles and have a maintenance building. I could put a maintenance building in my yard, I want to. If, if they have these things.
You can't operate a commercial operation and a residential, you can't.
Okay, I'm not running an operation, I'm not running an operation. They, yes, they are. And they even don't do a right there on that two, they're only going to run one operation. Yet there are, there are not amenities, that's not a really good word to use right now, I guess, accessories. Accessory things, a shared for home truck or a pile of rock or a place to park trucks or, or whatever, um, that are associated with the manufacturing of the asphalt, that they are allowed to put on those agriculturally.
They're not, not in the towns that I used to live in.
It's agricultural, is there some, or in the states, are you aware of something that agriculture uses? Parking vehicles and kind of the maintenance shed. I thought we, we did a lot of research on that.
It's a non-conforming business. And the statute says you shall not purchase additional properties in the purpose of expanding your business. If you look at the four cases against non-conforming businesses, you will see that it's different. It's the business operations. So when you, if you look at the four cases, one of the things they say there's a reason why something is non-conforming, that it's not meant to go into perpetuity. There are a lot of changes that you can look at. Now, please let us have such a dialogue with you, please. There is a lot of information and after you hear all the information, if you all go inside some of the ways, so be it. But please don't make a decision without giving us the time to talk to you and have.
Margaret? And I explained to Court, as soon as we got a letter from your attorney, the conversations cut to a minimum. I'm sorry, it, it was a litigation call. So protect me and the town, we're going to have to, we're going to have to speak.
Your attorney, he would like to speak, he says that I need to ask for that in order for you to be in.
Sure, that, yeah, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify some of the stuff on here.
There's a lot of confusion that should be taken.
There is so much disinformation, all right? And I just struggled with it much more than I wanted, all right? That things, that the people sitting right here and the B M A need to know, want to know and should know, and that citizens should know, so that the right decision is made for the right reasons. I'm not saying this to win an argument, I'm saying, I'm pleading with you, please be careful what you ask. I'm not saying this to win an argument. I'm saying, I'm pleading with you, please be careful what you ask for, and you may get it. Please.
Margaret, are you willing to share that information without having a conversation?
Absolutely.
Okay, then share me your information.
I will share that if you want. I need to have that in court. There are questions that come up. There are answers that are provided. Here are situations. Let me just say that this town can develop their own heavy industry ordinances. You don't need to go through all this. You can develop heavy industry ordinances like many other towns have done so without changing anything. You have something that most people don't have.
Okay, please send the information. Please send the information to the plan.
Mr. Chair, you can directly as a person speak next.
If, if your wife is telling, sure.
I'm not.
All right, I know what a time is.
Please wrap it up now.
mitigating measures that should be in place for heavy industry. Okay, I know what those are. I've read about it. I can present it and say, consider these for five hundred and fifty people who have invested in their homes that live near this plant. We are not trying to stop industry. I watch industry. I came from an industry background. You know, I'm not afraid of it. I think it has a place. It needs to be studied. Some of these towns work on a year before they decide their heavy industry ordinances. But you can have those separate and exclusive from changing anything. That plant can operate on those two acres. We're not trying to stop that.
So, send us, send us your recommendations. Send your recommendations. Let's hear from you.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else? Mr. Davis? Can you hear us, Mr. Davis?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, thanks for the opportunity to address you tonight, and thanks for the ability to do this via Zoom. I'm out of town at the moment, so this makes it possible for me to appear before you. I'm just going to be very succinct about the problems that we have with this proposed industrial overlay zoning district. I mean, first of all, this is not the kind of industrial overlay, or not the kind of overlay zone that you find anywhere. I have never seen, I've practiced environmental and zoning law in Tennessee for over thirty-six years. I've never seen an overlay zone that makes the restrictions less than imposing more restrictions instead. It is not proper because it is actually adding less restrictive uses to the underlying zones. And, you know, I know Mr. Murphy, who was consulted by the town, and he used to be the county, National Davidson County Attorney, and I looked at what Nashville does. It doesn't have any kind of overlay zoning that would be less restrictive than underlying zoning. It's just not done. In my letter to you, which I hope you have a chance to consider, I quoted from the definition of overlay zoning from the American Planning Association. I provided the discussion of overlay zones in the Tennessee Planning Commissioner Training Handbook, which I think most of you have seen, or you're supposed to be trained on it, I believe. And those say that overlay zones are for special conditions that require an extra level of regulation over and above the base level provided by the general zoning. Here, it's not being proposed that way. It's upside down. Another thing that overlay zones do is they are placed on the map at the time of adoption of the overlay zone. For instance, a historic overlay zone, that is created at the time it's put on the map, you don't have to apply to have an overlay zone. What essentially this is doing is creating a floating zoning district, not an overlay zone because you can't go look on the map and tell whether your property is in the overlay zone or not. And those floating zoning districts are not permitted in Tennessee. And I'm referring to the statute that gives this planning commission powers. It doesn't mention floating zoning district. It does mention overlay district, though. So, a floating zoning district, in this case, what you've proposed, or what the town's proposed, could potentially be located practically anywhere in most of the area of the town of Unicor. And that would greatly undermine the predictability created by established zoning districts. So, those are the two things I want you to consider when looking at this industrial overlay zone. Number one, it is less restrictive than the underlying districts. I can explain that more if you want. Number two, it is not placed on the map from the beginning so that landowners know if they're in or out of an industrial overlay zone. So, but I know we're talking about Summers Taylor and the asphalt plant, but this proposed industrial overlay district is so broad that it affects pretty much the whole town. And you know how much of your area is zone A1, which is most of the town? And most of that A1 is used for residential purposes. So, it actually, this proposal actually conflicts with the purpose it stated to avoid adversely affecting this residential environment of the town. Another point that I'd like to make is that the standards and criteria in the proposed section seven thirteen point seven are actually less restrictive than what you would find in the existing A1, M1, and M2 zones, particularly for setbacks, lot coverage. And for A1, the height restrictions are more restrictive in the existing zoning than there would be in the overlay district. So again, it's a way where the overlay district is weakening the existing zoning. So, it would add also a vague permitted use and industrial use to most of the town. This idea of, yes, we all know we're talking about an asphalt plant here, but the term used is construction-related materials production facilities. There's no definition in the proposed overlay zoning district as currently drafted. And as I said, it weakens the zoning regulations in each district. For instance, in A1, there's no explicitly permitted use that would allow for a construction-related materials production facility. It adds that to A1, therefore undermining the purpose of the A1 district. In M2, and also in M1, there's no permitted use that's even remotely similar to a construction-related materials production facility. And in M2, this idea of having an undefined construction-related materials production facility would override the requirement that a proposed industrial use be "an industry which does not cause injurious or obnoxious noise, fire hazards, or other objectionable conditions." That is a requirement. You currently have an M2. If a primitive use of, for construction-related materials production facilities is added by this M2, in M2, by this overlay district, then you would contradict that. So, you could also have a lot of other construction-related materials production facilities that would include quarries, cement plants, concrete plants, lumber mills, plywood manufacturing, fiberglass insulation. All of those could be located in or near residential areas throughout the town because A1 is pretty much the whole town. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those. I wanted to make sure that I could keep to my time. But I don't understand why, in order to accommodate Summers Taylor, the town would be willing to change its whole zoning ordinance and have likely unintended consequences in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. All right, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Anybody knows the realness knows what we all know. Bill had a version of it, what he wanted to do for two and a half decades. My family and I came to this city. This is the region Johnny Lynch. Firstly, glad to do some things down there. Then to the state of Tennessee. From Silverdale, it's a joke, over a joke, abandoned office to the regional office down there. Now, all of this is controlled over from Silverdale. They'll say, let's do it. I have a red hat, man. It's overlay. Hope you're opening up a can of worms. I'm nothing at all dumb country. Everybody knows that. But this city was to be small, yow, 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 yow. And Grant, he bothers with the intentions that we laid. He can put his land up there, I don't want to cross you next to it. And by the way, he goes on the three acres up there. Who owns the majority of the trees that will be in front of him? I'm unable to use solid very little bit. But I know the type of plant that he wants to be in. As long as he stays, stays on his two acres and everything. And then I'll ask you all another question. What are you going to do with the cats people? They're still at the old operation. They're doing everything except asphalt. They're still there. The witness is still there and everything. What are they doing? Rule number is, they're going to look. Now, you can overlay that. I let them go up there. What I've been through with those people. Oh, first, you know. They, you need to be down there for eyes. Which, I believe Bill had his home built before this went started in over there in ninety-four or ninety-five, something like that. We were in the courtroom over there with the county commissioner, this special call paid from the community. And they didn't have a big problem with cats. They had to hide or run in there and threw that little marble green plant up. Then two asphalt, or two, there were two wheel bars, asphalt out of it, operating plant. Then Summers brought their quarter of the plant in, and the statement was made, it didn't make no difference who it missed it. They were going to pay the decision. That's what they did. But I do not see start changing the rules. You know, if we're playing marbles, you start winning, taking all my marbles, I want to take and make the ring way bigger or whatever. That's what we're doing right now. But you're doing that, but opening up something that you're going to have to live with from now on. And another thing about industry, and I know this gentleman over here has talked about different services. Started all the slug. Well, they are in some of this. Now, if you're aware of that, there's also a justice to be killed by, they say, they, they, that's what you do. It's fine. The business. But, and I know I'm a free man, but we take, and the deal is, what public query going to close within ten, eight to ten years is the best information that I can use. And if anybody would know, Grant should know. Well, he's a pretty smart businessman, but he wants out here because where he's always going to come to, right down there. It's where he's going to come to, and he wants something to deal with then. Wait till I don't know how many million times it's going to happen. Let's have a year, but I only brought him both sides of the road was the exception. When you get up there to Bill Gordon, that's baby, I'm in the corner. On the other side, all the way up to Grant's property and everything. But closing, the only thing I'm saying is, he bought the two acres. The vessel, that's what he's got, and that's what he needs to stay.
Thank you, sir. All right. Who's next? This man.
My name is Diane Miller, and I live about, oh, half a mile from the quarry and plant, whatnot, now. Let me just start by saying that I am vehemently and adamantly against this overlaying. I think it's the wrong application. I don't think it's looked into Florida. I don't think we've got the correct application. It's not fit. I mean, it's just going to open up, like Bridger said, a whole pan of worms that we just don't even know what we're dealing with. Two acres is two acres, prosperity. I mean, I am a woman of free enterprise. I believe in, and I trust that he will move forward with prosperity in his, within his reach. But to me, I mean, we've talked earlier about, oh, just creating our destiny. Well, that's what I did when I bought the ten acres, just about a half a mile from this area that's being under consideration. And I've got my grandbabies there, and I've got my kids there. I've got their teachers and employees, both of them. We all live within a half a mile from this beautiful idea that we had and is now no longer a frame of destiny. Sounds to me like a conditional use permit. It sounds to me like a free role. It's like a conditional use permit or try this and then dabble in that. There's no express written warranty interest or permanent guidelines. But this self-monitoring thing's not going to happen. That's what I don't trust. I've lost confidence in the self-monitoring ability for this kind of industry. That's a fact. So I just want, you know, to close and say that I agree wholeheartedly and I'm vehemently against this application. I think that this overlay is a big mistake.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table this until more information can be...
We've got a motion on the floor.
I have to withdraw my motion to approve it. I don't know who seconded it. Who seconded it?
I think I did. Or no, Gary did, or... Billy did, yeah.
Second or removal?
Yeah, we have a motion on the, we've got to take care of that motion first.
Let me give you just a little bit of departmental procedure. A motion to table is the type of motion that can come up at any time, even when we're in discussion. Throw a little summary at you about department procedure, but it's the kind of motion that can come up at any time. So you've got a motion to table, subject to the main, or superior to the main motion, that it is a motion that is forward. So I think the departmental procedure is to ask if there's second.
All right.
I second the table.
Mr. Buchanan made a motion to table this issue.
For at least thirty days.
Until next meeting? Wanda seconded it. Okay, got any discussion on that?
Can we... The purpose of it is to gather information, so how do we set up some informative meetings that we can gather information so we can make an intelligent decision? I mean, we have that lawyer, we have another lawyer with opposing views. We have constituents of the county or the city. I mean, I think we need to gather everything and then see. And I think Grant has what, whatever made this happen. What's his input? I mean, if we go to all this trouble, would this even, would he be interested in entertaining that? Was that question ever asked? I mean, those types of things. So, before we go to a lot of trouble, I mean, would this fit what I think our objective was to move it back to hide it? It's one of the major objectives, and contain it to the two acres or three acres. So if that's not the case, and then all these other things come into the picture, I mean, all that needs to be, and we could have a plan, put it out, and then vote it up or down, knowing all these questions was an answer, I think. I would feel more comfortable.
Consultation with the table over here.
Yes, this was put together, this was put together fast.
Tableing, well, it's been worked on.
No, I know, you all have, but we just saw it. And his question is...
And respecting that.
Yeah, we're going to sit, we're going to put this, you know, if we're going to put this down for a month.
I just want to figure out how to do it.
That's right, oh, I know it, yeah. What can we do? What can we do?
That's where I'm going.
You know, we're going to have, you know, email chains or...
Yeah, email exchanges with the entire planning commission keeps everybody in the loop. You know, everybody can see everybody's response. Having another meeting would be costly, and I'm not sure who's, at whose expense. You don't have a call planning for this, they have a schedule. Would be costly. My recommendation, just get on a big email chain.
Normally, the procedure is when someone asks for a call meeting, we ask them if they want to pay the cost better, if they can express their need at a call meeting. This could be, I guess, if you have sense of the board to have meetings prior to the time this would be, to get the recall from the table.
Informational workshop type deal.
Would this board prefer it to be in the full, in a workshop form? Would the board, would this board prefer it to be email exchanges? Would the board prefer two or three members of planning attend and then report back to the board? How would this board prefer to move forward?
Who's available, who can be available to meet?
I'm in.
Okay.
I'm in. Again, the day is crucial.
Oh, I, right, right.
I don't have a calendar, I'm trying to make either.
Can you?
Make some things work.
With, with Dan and Bill? And can you all put together, you know, an hour?
Bill, you seem to be more restricted with time or days. So email, well, email me three or four choices, three, three, four, five.
And then, and then anybody else that's got.
And we'll send it out to everybody.
Right, right, if anybody else has got recommendations.
To. I'll send it out to all, I'll send it out to you, it'll come to you as well for it.
Okay.
We have.
Jean Sted has a hand, but.
All right, you know, Jean, go ahead. You're going to have to unmute yourself.
I've been trying to unmute myself.
There you are.
Just introduced, I'm Jean Sted, I'm on Buffalo Springs Road. I've been a resident of Unicoi County for thirty-eight years, a citizen of the town of Unicoi. Lobbyed for the incorporation of the town of Unicoi based on the principle of sustainable development. And what I'm hearing now is a proposal, and I totally concur with Gary Davis in terms of totally changing the zoning philosophy of the town. My husband Ed was the first chairman of the planning commission of the town of Unicoi. So we've been there, done that, and to me, this is more than a specific rezoning issue for Summers Taylor. This is about the philosophy of how the town of Unicoi will grow in the future. It's much more than what you guys are talking about right now. It's a philosophical change. I highly suggest that the planning commission, which has been totally recomposed in terms of the town leadership to develop a set of criteria for industrial development in the town. This list of restrictions, this no-no restrictions, this doesn't go. That's ridiculous. What are the criteria for industrial development in our town of Unicoi? This is your responsibility to us, our citizens, who are adamant about sustainable growth. Not growth for economic growth in and of itself. Thank you for, please, please. I mean, I just wonder why a motion like this came out on Friday, Good Friday, and the meeting was Monday? That sounds like Washington DC. What is going on? Let us have a dialogue. And please listen to Gary Davis, the expert. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, so Kathy Yule or Bill, you're going to. Yes, 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 ma'am.
My name is Rob Engel. I think if any business, any industry town, family, anybody needs to have certain value principles, I'm rich in expertise. Any entity needs to have a fundamental purpose that drives all of you. Who are, what are we trying to be, what we want to put on the board in the end? You can go all about it, you can do about actions, working backwards, you can unravel priorities of a person or a town pretty quickly by watching what they do. So I'm a little confused today. I'm not sure I know that we are a good town or something. I don't know what we find and what we want to be, and I don't know what we want others to see at that. I was born here and I've lived in this for the past twelve years. I spent my career before I just retired and wanted to be a salesperson, and I remember that it's a good to me. Our responsibility is to work with our employees, our clients, the public, to make clearly who and what the world, the town, our citizens, our clients get to spend on us, and then deliver on this. So I think about things from the standpoint of what this company or this town is about. What's the culture of the employees? So this is what I believe, this is what I thought I was going to do. Now, I thought that the vision of the town includes supporting the lives and livelihoods of our residents and businesses while preserving and promoting the beauty and culture that make our town special in the world. From that foundation, you can create jobs. You can attract industry and business, you can create tourism and cultural opportunities that support those towns. But that's not what the actions have been paid by the zoning initiative, as I understand it. That's not what these proposed actions tell me about our town. So what are they? Are we dedicated to value beautiful? Are we supposed to raise your family and have a peaceful retirement? Or are we going to keep our towns invested apart? I don't know. I thought I was. I hope you reject this overlay as our proposal and will also reject Summers Taylor's attempt to expand industrial zoning in this agriculture residential area. Because no matter what you call it, that is what it is. A overlay zoning is rezoning in this.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yeah.
I've been just like calling for a little over a year and a half, I like to my water, I'm going to go on the road. You know, I want to say after everybody else has already said here, is the only thing that Summers Taylor, the only, they're the only ones who are backing from this for the sake of making a profit in this issue.
Yes, Ms. Ray.
I don't understand these two, I really didn't. I know they don't believe me, but I did. I spent probably well over a hundred hours researching, so you know, for your health, your own health, and your business, right? One thing that Summers Taylor has, no, nobody tells the whole story about you. The first time Summers Taylor came to our town, their attorney wrote our town a letter and agreed to only ever have one asphalt factory. They're not wanting to have concrete factory or a sludge factory. Their permit will be, if we give them one, it will be for one asphalt factory wherever, you know. And we keep talking about their current two acres. They bought a twelve acre tractage of property, and there is no town documentation that has ever divided for twelve acres to ten and two acres. Under the law, it appears that it is, my lawyer skills says, they have twelve acres, they've been what they want to with right now. They, nobody wants to talk about that. But the only thing they want to do is they would like to tear down the whole asphalt factory that is far more immersive than their new factory. The town of Unicoi does not have any permitting, it's all through innocent pollution control, EPA. We don't have a person to tell you if they're doing good or bad. We don't permit that. They're asking for one factory, they're not asking for asphalt or sludge, for nothing else. And from the very first day, they've been willing to work whatever we would be willing to give them. But you know, the way these meetings are going, this started January, February, March, April, now we're going to go to May. See, I believe we're trying to get rid of that thirty months, I believe. Because I think this man has said here, how many times we won't make him come to this meeting before we can decide to give him a yes or no answer and decide what he can do then? I mean, I'm not personally taking that to them. Is this how we going to treat every industry who wants to come to this little town? I mean, we're sixteen tomorrow, is this an example, we want to gain that? And by the way, this letter, what about the other thirty-five hundred citizens we've got? They're not, they're not all the employees. Y'all do your own stuff, little sergeant tail. We won't have some other citizens in this town that don't come over here and want to talk? We represent, and you folks up there, and me, and this man, and this woman, we represent every citizen of this town, and we going to make it the best we can for each one of them. We just because certain things can get together, have a hundred people in it, and hire a lawyer and have leverage. That's not fair for the other thirty-five hundred or something. We got to figure out a way to address this, put out an excuses and move on. And either we let him operate or we not. And then for that to make his decision what he makes today. But this does a fine excuse to put it out, it's not getting him any work, it's not getting none of these people any work or any others. We're just spinning our wheels. I mean, we carved it, carved it out, and last year, they carved it on out of pasture. And we got a attorney, a helicopter sitting out here, and we can't even get hundreds to agree. So you guys are sitting up there, y'all going to make a decision sometime later.
Thank you, ma'am.
We were telling him that he can operate.
Hey, sir.
Two acres, like, we're going to come over and say.
Sir. Hey, Tor, please, all right. Ms. Ray?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a comment. You are on the board of Mayor Alderman, and this is just the planning commission. You have the power. If you all want to do something, you could do it whether we approve it or not. You can override it. So, I mean, you're the one with the power. You three and then these two up here. So, I mean, we're not the ones holding things up.
The protocol says it goes through the planning commissioner, okay? You know, that should be how it should work.
It should be, but if you all want to bypass this, you can. You're the one with the power. You're the one with the power.
You should give it an upper down thing, you should give it an upper down voice and move on.
Thank you.
I mean, it's been four months.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
The way I see it is Summers Taylor bought that property with two acres, not conforming. They're business people. They took that chance to come into a town that already had coordinates against it of how I already bought this in ninety-four or whatever. We went through it. And I remember very distinctly, they just said, oh, they're, they're just going to do it to I twenty-six to try to cut, you know, keep people happy then. And so we know we had an asphalt plant. It was fine on the two acres. Why would you guys even consider going against five hundred and fifty of your residents and devaluing their property along with putting, you know, we have to deal with the pollution and all that kind of stuff, which Summers Taylor is not doing twenty-seven thousand tons like was done before. They're going to do a hundred thousand tons. So I just don't see why one company has so much power over five hundred and fifty homeowners in this town that have lived here and worked here and their property values are going to go, who's going to buy a piece of property? People can go on Google Earth and say, oh, I don't want to buy that fire, man, look at this asphalt plant here. I mean, it's just, there's so much information out now. I just don't think that it's fair to the five hundred and fifty people that live. And are you, are we going to get our taxes lower because our property value goes down? I just don't see how there's any advantage to our town to do this. They bought it, they have, they bought it like it was, and they should be able to live with it like it was. That's my.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Kind of present an analogy stuff, but what she said, I'll just kind of piggyback on that. I urge you to look at Google Earth, and look at the Green Bull plant. Summers Taylor. They're next to a quarry, which they eventually acquired, they would probably do here. It comes to a hundred and fifty acres. It is an amazing sight to see, but it is an ugly sight to see if you live next to it. If that's what you see. And when someone's looking at our home, I remember when I was looking for real estate here, I looked at Google Map and Google Earth and said, what's around it? Because, you know, this nice little house looks really pretty here, but what's around it? And I avoided places that have horrible, whatever industries around here. And so they will not just stay on that two acres if you give them all the money. They're going to use that whole property, and they're going to push it, even though we take the position that this state of Tennessee says you cannot expand a non-conforming business. You start, just go look, the roads, the rapiles, the rock, the mountain is almost gone there, and ours will be too. And I, the town's reputation will be gone. I don't think this is what, you look at the newspaper, Unicoi County's bragging about how wild scenic, beautiful stuff here, the tourism, that pays good money for us. We're going to lose it, we're going to lose it all when you put this massive plant, because it will become handsome. I don't know how you stop it, because they will probably lie to you, and they'll just keep going. So good luck with that.
Thank you, ma'am. You've had your time, sorry. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Sitting, sitting for a while, kind of stiffens up the legs. But I've got a different kind of a plea to make for the board. What we've concentrated on so far is the immediate question of the two acres, the fifteen acres. I would suggest that the board think long and hard from what I thought of all unintended consequences. What we're looking at is not, what's happening to that two acres, that fifteen acres in the next eighteen months or twelve, nineteen months. What we're really looking at is the consequences of these decisions, and those consequences are going to pay, are going to have a payoff way, way, way into the future. If all you do is think about, oh, well, let's see, we're going to, here's an issue we're going to deal with, and we're going to control it. I'm going to suggest to you that you might, you're probably not going to control it as well as you think, because you can't, you can't predict the future. So what you need to be looking at is not so much what's happening in the next twelve months, but what's going to happen, or that could be happening in the next twelve years. You need to have a longer time horizon than I've already expressed so far tonight.
Thank you, sir. You've got.
I think you guys should put one of you guys on studying how Summers Taylor acquired that hundred acres, because, I mean, it could happen. The quarter horse people would sell their property right next to it or anyone else.
All right, anybody else have anything else to say? Mr. Summers, do you like to say anything?
Well, this wasn't really our request at the beginning.
I know that, I just, everybody's talking about you, I thought I'd give you a chance.
Right, then, I guess, I guess, yeah, we've been pretty clear about what we want. We just want to replace piece of equipment, move it off into the days of. So people choose not to leave that, you can choose to believe that we have ulterior motives, I can't control that. I do believe that it is a better site next to it, I believe that it's more inconspicuous, it is better for us. I don't think we're wrong, it is a little flatter. next to it, I believe that it's more inconspicuous, it is better for us, I don't think we're wrong, it is, it is a little flatter, weighs a little bit. Two versus three acres, that, that total acreage is irrelevant in our, for our operations. A piece of equipment's the same, it's here, worth there, we started this process trying to be a little less dis. It's up really often, and looking back, you probably, it's, uh, we, we do wanna be good there, I know people don't believe that, we don't, we're a quarry, we're a ringel, Vulcan, huge nationally traded company, because, and we operate a plant there, it is a much bigger plant, you're right, the rapiles there, all that, that plant's been operating for thirty years. It's so worthless the other day that somehow it grows, but then you should recycle it, now it recycles, yeah. Things, but, um, we're just trying to work through the process, again, the overlay is not our proposal. You know, whether it's the, the right thing, the right way, it's not, I'm not a liar. It was an attempt, I believe, by the planner and others to have a compromise. Does it allow more than that? Yes. Is it less than two? Yes. And so I think that they were trying to propose a compromise. And so we can, can you talk about it? I don't imagine, you know, many people would be pleased with being operating that asphalt plant, and I understand that, that's my business. We're trying to do as well as we can, that's all we can, so, we'll let the process go, and, yeah.
Thank you, sir. All right, anybody else? All right. We've got a motion to table and a second on the floor, any further discussion?
If we determine what will take place between now and then.
I'm gonna email you for, or you, or you email me some dates.
Take some dates, give them.
And then, Court, I think we were exchanging some conversation that got interrupted. Do, do you, if I get dates from Bill, do you have to give a date, do you have a lot of restrictions?
No, I'm pretty much, I mean, if I, we need to talk, kind of, you know, in a business-like way about, like, any corporate meeting that I have, and that's.
We can, we can meet up here.
Figure out who the attendees are, because that's important.
We can meet up here.
Everybody.
Well, why don't you email, why don't you email your suggestions that you'd like to see here? Email them to me.
I'll just put them in a pool and we'll figure out.
Okay, and I'll be the point person, so y'all email your dates and whatnot to me. Whoever wants to come and be here, who you'd like to be invited. I'll be the point person, okay, and we'll figure out a date. Bill?
All right, anything else? Devin?
Yes. Billy Martin?
Yes. Yes.
One red, first P S, Thursday.
Yes.
Phil Ness?
Yes.
Amy Bill.
Yes.
Motion carries, and we'll, we'll table this until the next meeting, and hopefully, have some other meetings in the meantime. Okay, all right. Uh, next item, election of officers. We need to elect chairman, vice chairman, and secretary position, which is currently open.
I make the motion to, um, for Todd Hoxton for chairman.
Say, I have a motion and a second, if, did I be elected chairman? Any other nominations? I'd like to nominate Bill Ness. I seen that wins.
You can work with.
Yeah, I would, I would, Todd, Todd, thank you, but I, I just.
All right, uh, motion and second, that, that I'd be elected chairman, any further discussion? Devin?
Abby Golden, yes. Billy Martin?
Yes.
Tom Hobson?
Yes.
One red.
Yeah, I can't say it late. Mine knows not gonna count.
Thursday.
It is.
Phil Ness.
Yes.
Amy Bill.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, uh, vice chairman. All right, uh, motion and second to elect Dan as the vice chair. Any further discussion? Devin?
Abby Golden, yes. Billy Martin?
Yes.
Tom Hobson?
Yes.
One red, first P S, Thursday.
Yes.
Phil Ness?
Yes.
Amy Bill.
Why not?
All right, motion carries, all right, now we need the secretaries.
Wanda.
One's red.
I said, I'll second, yeah. Uh, motion and second, to elect Wanda Rafford as the secretary. Any further discussion? All right, Devin?
Abby Golden, yes. Billy Martin?
Yes.
Tom Hobson?
Yes.
One red. Might as well. Thursday.
Yes.
Phil Ness?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion carries, all right, we have our, we have our officers. Welcome, thank you all. Uh, all right, any other business? Anybody here have anything else to say that we haven't talked about? Nothing to do with the overlay, nothing to do with asphalt plant? Okay.
I think it was good, man.
Thank you.
We had one side, pardon.
Yeah.
Overall, it's good, I'll tell them. Thank you for your time, I'll thank you for your time.
Devin, you got anything for us? Lewis?
I make the motion.
Motion for adjournment, second.
Email me if you want me in that meeting, and give me some dates, I think we're working around his schedule.
All right, thank you all, thank you all for coming. You wish to change your mind now?
I don't know, yeah.